Yep, I'll call this meeting of the Lake County E nine one one Authority. It's ordered at ten hundred hours on March seventh, twenty twenty five.
Sorry, sir, I have ten oh three.
Uh, ten oh threes. I'll correct that. Computers behind me. Uh, does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Nope. Okay, and I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda second. Any further discussion? If you have no further discussion, all in favor of the agenda? Aye.
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 Alright, agenda's approved. Um, public comment. I think we have floor for everybody today, it's to some level. And Andy, you have anything for us?
Nope, Paul, good, good morning.
Good morning, thanks for joining. Alright, we'll move on to Director Reports. Um, I'll start off with just, just an update from the our hiring efforts in the Sheriff's Office is we're gonna work with HR and a and some recruitment efforts that they offer by newspaper advertisements and website advertisements. And basically, it's a QR code, but it leads to the county hiring page. So, everybody in the county benefits from that, of course, our, it's being advertised as Lake County Sheriff's Office positions, but when somebody opens the tab. So maybe we'll get some traffic there on dispatch positions available. Actually, it should be in the paper, I'm guessing? Now? When does it normally come out?
Yeah.
Did you see it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so it should be out in the paper, but the website, I think we're gonna have to work with whoever has website access to get that stuff. And we're gonna use some geo fencing stuff, they're actually gonna get this out to some academies and whatnot. So hopefully, there's some touch points there with dispatch also. That's all I have. I'm going to click.
Yeah, um, so from kind of the E nine one side, the county did invoice us for the money we owe them for administrative services like HR, finance, IT. So that is being transferred internally, um, so good to get that done at the end of the year. Uh, finance has also assured me that the audit will be turned in on time this year. That is definitely her top priority, so that'll be a little bit of a weight off of our, our shoulders. Uh, from the OEM side, just a few things I wanna raise to the group. Uh, one, thank you for everyone that came to the SEPA, the Colorado Emergency Preparedness Workshop the other week. I just got the draft of that report yesterday, so I'll be going through it and sending it out to the group. Um, also willing to sit down with anyone individually and kind of work through that and make sure we're all on the same, same page and understanding um, about how we can use that report and what it means. Um, OEM will also be hosting our elected and executive training next week on March thirteenth from one to four up at CMC. Uh, I think all of you guys should have got an invite for that. Um, it'll be a good time, I'll be talking, Noah from the Division of Homeland Security Emergency Management will be talking. Um, and then we'll do kind of a short exercise, so if you come, be prepared, be put on the spot, it'll be fun. Um, and we'll be snacks. Oh, of course, always for snacks, those are always the biggest hit. Um, also on Monday, um, my professional organization for emergency management, SEMA, will be down at the Capitol. We'll be doing our first Emergency Management Day at the Capitol. Um, so I'm really excited to go down, uh, meet with our legislators down there, um, talk with them about emergency management issues, but also, you know, my field really intersects with, as we know, dispatch a lot. Um, so excited to kind of go at it from that perspective too. Uh, SEMA is very much watching the second language, um, emergency alerting legislation that's on the floor right now, how that impacts both dispatch and emergency management and a lot of concerns we have with it. Um, so it'll be a really good day, I'm excited to go down there, um, and meet with the representatives down there. Um, lastly, I do wanna acknowledge that it is Employee Appreciation Day. Um, so I just wanna verbally say thank you to our dispatch team, you guys are really rocking it and doing a lot of work with the local staff. Uh, so just know that I am, I'm sure I can speak for the board, really appreciate everything that you guys are doing, so thank you, keep up the good work. And we do appreciate you every day, just not today, but.
Not just today.
Not just today, thank you, sorry, I'm gonna try and pour coffee. Um, and that is all. We appreciate you every day.
I got it.
Just not today.
Not just not today. Crushed it. Um. So yeah, uh, that is all I have for my side.
Jeremiah. Uh, I don't have much, uh, Paul, did you have a hold of you yesterday?
Yes.
Okay, they were talking to me about trying to put in notes on specific places and things like that. I had wanted him to get ahold of you to come up with a process for that, so that it was the same across all dispatchers, it wasn't just them calling a dispatcher and the dispatcher doing whatever they wanted. Um, there was a process for that, so I'll be wanting to work that out with them, but I think it's a great idea for, yeah, in this case, it was like a hoarder house. Um, or, you know, codes for houses that we come across, or, um, you know, previous violent encounters with first responders, whatever it is. But those notes come up, so the dispatchers go at us now, I think that'd be a great process to start.
Um, we are, I was talking to Chief Boyle already, we already have it. He's just getting the info, so as soon as he gets that info, then we, we're gonna start inputting everything, but if it's something like really critical right now, let us know, we'll just do that right away.
Sounds good. Anything else on the other?
That's it. We did have a person misusing nine one one Saturday night, we're gonna seek prosecution, there are some interesting dynamics to the situation, so I'm gonna be curious to see how the municipal court handles it. I'm having a hard time finding him, I told him Sunday morning I was gonna cite him, and he has disappeared.
Can't imagine.
I wish I would've had the citation or the summons ready when I spotted him, but I didn't.
I have a new house bill coming out too, also for misuse of nine one one.
We have what?
A new house bill coming out.
Good.
We're gonna address all that, so.
Do you know what that is?
I can't think of the number right now, but I will get it and I will share it.
I have it, I didn't find it, yeah, cuz we're checking it on SEPA too.
Do you? Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, he called, I think nineteen, thirteen times he called nine one one.
Hmm.
And nine times the general number.
What's his name?
Uh, Haime is what he's known as.
James Garcia.
James Garcia, that's, that's, that's what I'm saying, uh, there are some interesting dynamics. But he knows the difference between right and wrong, and I think he's exploiting our processes in his condition.
Okay.
That's why I say I'm gonna be curious to see how the court handles it.
And we could put a file on that number also. We could put a file on that number, also, just so you guys are aware, when we get that inside dispatch, we can let you know.
But he is gonna.
What level of judge is he?
It's a, I think it's a petty offense. Yeah. I decided, I mean, I decided to take it through municipal court instead of county court, so we'll see. Paul.
Um, so I have been in contact with CISA, Cybersecurity Infrastructure Security Agency. Um, spoke with them, um, they gave me a link, and they will come in and do our cybersecurity check, look and see if we're lacking anything in there, and they will even help us to write plans to do a whole lot of stuff, I mean, very beneficial. And also with our cellphones, how all first responders get you on the wireless priority service. Um, we could do that even with all our stakeholders and everyone, it could always be, it could be under us or whatever, that everyone who needs to have it can have it, very easy to access, we just need to apply for it, my phone's already on there, my dispatch phone. And then we could also use, do landlines also. So, um, got that going, so hopefully, we could get that going, to see where we are. Um, also, Iron Edge also has jumped on that to see where we are security wise, just because we know so much cybersecurity is going on right, you know, so many things coming in and, um, I'd not like to, I would prefer not to see as ransom. You know, pull it like that, so, um, that's one of my big things, and I think we're on the right track for that, you know, getting at least somebody to look at it, who knows what they're doing with it, you know, and who can help us and walk through it. Um, I did the training for iPOS that she had sent out on the twenty seventh. I learned a lot.
The two forty seven?
The tabletop, the tabletop.
Oh, the, the tabletop, yeah.
I learned so much and, um, it was great, and now I have contacts, and they're sending me also for, cuz Washington passed a bill also for the second language and how that looks, so I'm really excited about that to see, so we're not reinventing the wheel of how we do something. And then also, um, they will do training with dispatch, and we can do a training every month with all dispatchers to put in to see how it works and where we go, so no one forgets, so that's my goal, to have that for every dispatcher, to do an iPOS every month that we could go in there and they said we could do anything that we want, we just need to go through the portal, the training portal, so I'm excited about that. So, um, and then I guess one of the bigger things that is coming up, and hopefully after we get the backhaul and everything completed, I really need to work on GIS. Our, our GIS is not good, and it, it's really a for us, we're com, we're doing a list right now, a spreadsheet on all the addresses that we don't have. And so we're still utilizing e-force a lot for those addresses, um, cuz they're not popping up. So that, that's a big thing on its own is GIS, so, um, here real soon, looking at that. Um, we have two new employees who started, Mariana, well, Mariana's already been here a month. Um, and then Kate started on Monday. Um, Mariana's loving it, Kate is, they're, they're really, Mariana's picking up pretty well, actually. So, I'm really happy about that. Um, Kate started off days, but now she's gonna go to nights, because I feel like nights gives them the opportunity to ask more questions and to see how things work without being interrupted so much. So, I think that's a good base, um, have, um, people coming in and testing on Wednesday. And it kind of concerns me though as to where I will put them, because we don't have enough computers or whatever, so my thought is maybe, I don't know, setting up something. I don't know where they can go to really train or whatever after they finish their training online. Just because I kind of figured that out on Monday when Kate was here, it was too crazy, it was too crazy in there for them to really get what they needed. And it, it was just too crowded. It was a little bit of chaos, so I just wanna make sure that our dispatchers are getting the appropriate training. So, if I hire another person, I just wanna stagger it out just a little bit, I guess is what I'm saying. Maybe, yes, we could go forward, see where they're at with interviews, how fast they are wanting a job. If they can wait a month, and that's usually how the process takes anyway, but I wanna make sure that we have a place for them to know what we're doing. You know, even if maybe we set up another computer, rearrange dispatch a little bit. You know, to see how we can fit in, just another station or something.
Yeah, yeah, that's a way you can do that, to make it work for you guys, and to make it work for training, crazy, dude.
And, um, we're just, we're just learning things every day, and dispatchers, I believe are, they're really, they're really happy right now with things, you know, and they're not being discouraged or anything, you know, we're working and they really wanna learn new things and to grasp everything, so I have been giving them quite a bit of information, but I think it's information that is vital to dispatch, and they're really happy about it. And they're taking it in stride, and they're pretty happy about, you know, learning and knowing what dispatch is about and what we really do and stuff like that, so. So far, I think it's going pretty well, and they're really supportive and, you know, if I ask them anything or help them or whatever, they're really, you know, taking it all in and, I don't know, we have a good atmosphere right now. So, it's nice to see. Any questions for me?
Oh, I'm sure there's more coming.
That was long, sorry.
That's okay. Thanks for those updates. Um, yeah, we'll move on to our new, new business and discussion, uh, starting off with the item for eight years, review and discussion of the current process for special event permits in Lake County and suggested improvements. Uh, Jeremiah and I will, will lead this one, um, and thanks to Marla for being here today to kind of maybe fill in some gaps of understanding, and then, you know, just I guess the introduction to us and what we do. Um, this is, you know, fairly new, I know there's been a board before, but, um, do you, you know about us?
You know, I'm learning more and we're just being here, so.
Okay, cool. So, yeah, this is, so we're the E nine one one Authority Board, uh, we're, we're five, five members. Uh, you know, the primary first responders in Lake County, and, um, and so this is what dispatch now falls underneath. And so there's, uh, it used to be underneath the Sheriff's Office, and so there's, there's a change there that we're gonna have to, you know, address through the permitting process, uh, because everything was always underneath the Sheriff's Office for approval on the dispatchers, et cetera, and so. So this is just a, a discussion today to, to bring out some of that information, talk through some maybe, um, current sticking points, how we can improve things in the future and whatnot. And then we can also hopefully hear from you, uh, how the process normally works. So we, we, we did expect a full thirty minute presentation from you today, I hope you prepared for that.
I could talk for thirty minutes? I'm sure you do not want that for lunch. Happy to help wherever I can.
Yeah. Yeah, what do you have? Well, you can start with her.
Okay.
Yeah, um, so Jeremiah and I met earlier, um, to kind of discuss this. It, it kind of opened up into a discussion, like a broader discussion on, on the events.
Something you haven't heard from me before.
Yeah, right. And we are, it's, it's a unique mixture, like we're the Authority Board for Dispatch right here, but we're also rep, you know, represent our different agencies that are all first responders, uh, which is a, a key part of the event process. And so, um, so I don't know what the best way to manage that is, um, you know, I think we should, we'll, we'll try to stay as focused as possible today on the dispatch aspect. Uh, but there's also a lot of questions on just how the Sheriff's Office looks through these things and what requirements, you know, are good for us, OEM, EMS, and City, of course. Um, so, uh, I'm sure we'll have some crossover in this, in today's discussion with that, but, um, you know, essentially today, looking at, you know, the, the need for dispatchers. And how do we address that, uh, now being its own entity or county department in a way, um, to make sure that they're involved in those needs? And this, you know, kind of came to light, uh, after this past weekend having ski drawing here, and, um, you know, dispatchers answering phones with their feet, there's just so much stuff going on, and it's just our normal dispatchers there. And we know this, this is, ski drawing's not new for us, but, uh, to make sure that, that part of the process that we include.
Can I just make a point of clarification? That's all through the city, we don't get a ski drawing permit, do we?
We do not, yeah.
Well, yeah, that's why, that's why we gotta get on this bigger conversation about like, how do we combine these things? Because there is, the separate process doesn't really work.
Yeah, no, it doesn't, I completely agree, I just wanna make that back there.
No, no, thanks, yeah, thanks for clarifying that, yeah, definitely, it was, it was just eye opening, you know, to see, um, you know, that touch, like I didn't see the city permit. Uh, from the Sheriff's Office standpoint, um, and I think if I'm not seeing it, then there's probably nobody touching dispatch from the city application, right? Did you guys?
I signed up all of them, yeah.
Oh, you, you are, okay, yeah.
And I had some feedback, that it seems like it was incorporated. Yeah.
So I think we're improving there. Do you, do you have, um, Marla, maybe if you don't mind, just kind of walking us through, uh, just like the general process with event applications and?
Sure.
I don't know, that'd be awesome.
So typically, when we receive them in, we do look to try to make sure that they are as current as possible, because we do have those that want to reoccur, and they wanna submit the same permit they have for the last ten years, without making the needed adjustments. So we're trying to catch that on our side, just to make sure we're submitting to you all as the review agencies the best information we can obtain. And sometimes that takes a little back and forth just to get that completed. But we can incorporate additional asks, we can ask for things on our end, just so that when you receive them, you're busy, you have a lot of other things going on, we'd like to get you as much detail as you need.
Okay.
So when you see it come from me, it's as clean as I can get it at that time. Sometimes it might be a little bit outdated, but I send it that way, because maybe we'll push in a timeline. And I'm just trying to get it in front of your eyes in case there's, maybe there's a conflict for those days, and you really don't want an event on that time, and you might need to shift it or ask for something different.
And there's, um, there's, so the approving agencies, uh, is a request for review. How hard it, would it be to get, um, somebody representing dispatch on that request list?
No problem, yeah. We can always, we can add anyone that's you all see get to, that would be helpful.
Okay. And then, um, so how about the relationship with the city, is there, uh, CC sent something out, uh, not too long ago, but there's gonna be more collaboration with the city, does that affect events at all? Special events?
So special events used to coordinate somewhat from our office, we'd send it to the city for their approval, and they'd run it through their process and just come back with an acknowledgement. They have an entirely different process now. So if it's going to undertake city, it has to go through their temporary use process. And I believe in most cases that involves a meeting with mayor, city council, and any entities that they deem necessary. Once they have city approval, then they need to bring that into their portfolio of documents, so that we know city's already approved. We don't try to align it, we just say, if you need the city, we need to know the city's on board, so that we can assure that all the entities are ready for this. It's going to get very interesting with the lifetime events.
Yeah, cuz they're both.
On how that's gonna translate.
County and city, they end up being able.
Yes.
Is that, so is that a, is that part of the process for an event that's only city? Where they have to communicate security?
So if it's only city, we seldom know.
Okay.
We are not usually advised. Or specifically myself and Ann. Now, there may be overlap with Claire, Jeremiah, and possibly anyone else that they feel that they need to connect with, but, um, you don't know, we don't always.
Would that be helpful if you did?
I think that the more we can share is great, but in the same respect, we don't necessarily alert the city if it's county owned. So we could reciprocate.
Okay.
Yeah, if we could, uh, if we could combine that process at all, I don't know if the city's up for that then, but if we could combine that process at all, that would be great. And then all of us know about all events that would happen, regardless of whether it's city or county, you guys are on the same page. Like, the, the bill process is, is, doesn't work.
It's difficult, but I do know it's difficult, and it's, um, what we see as important and relevant may not be exactly what they see, and vice versa.
Right.
So, we could always look to see what that process might be.
Sure.
Absolutely.
I think ski drawing's a really good example of that, um, especially with the fact that it's all this year.
Yeah. Right, yeah, and that's, that was one of the points too, is that that, if that's gonna continue to be a ten thousand, fourteen thousand person event, then that becomes a much bigger thing than it ever has been before. And it's going to take a lot more resources, and we have to put way more requirements on the, what's needed, and what they need to pay for, and all these things, that's going to, continuing to happen.
Yeah, and I think too, I, I have always kind of taken issue with the three year permitting, permitting process that the city does, I think for some events it makes sense. I do not think for ski drawing, it has never made sense. Um, so, I, I think kind of more of a joint venture there would be beneficial for all of us.
And this was year one of the, for year.
Yeah, as far as, I did not see, Chief, I don't know if you did, I know Duffy did a presentation to council, but I never saw the actual permit back up on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Unless it was hidden in the consent agenda, but to my knowledge, it was on the present.
It was.
Yeah. Yeah.
So did I not to, so this was year one of three years, it was good for two more years, which is why I kind of pushed some things, uh, pretty hard this year.
Um, so the, uh, special event process that the county has right now, there's, there are certain, you know, it's all laid out in here with the different requirements. Um, how does, is, what's the way of going about change? I know we talked a little bit about adding extra people in there just to, uh, for the review agencies, and that seems pretty simple. Uh, but when it comes to requirements, is this, uh, are there policies in place that address how this application process goes that you're aware of? Um, or is this, hey, like, kind of looking at this from the ground up again with, starting with you and Ann, and then presenting to the commissioners about these different changes that we're talking about here? What's, what's your knowledge on that?
It's, the piece I know of is it's just evolved.
Okay.
So, special event permitting existed long before it landed with me, and it's just kind of as the years progress, as the needs change, as the desires change, we try to incorporate everything in there. But as far as a true defined policy, I'm not aware.
Okay. So it's just mainly revolved around, like modifying this document, and, okay.
And maybe, you know, as we find things that are of concern, notes and how we can work to amend it, we have always just tried to make sure everyone had a say, if there was a concern, we noted it. And then it comes to our department just because of the permitting piece, rather than, but we're happy to do the back and forth as we need to, to get it to where it needs to be. It may log into a scope that is much more than what we touch. It, it needs to vet through a different group or an additional group to get everything on there. And Claire and Jeremiah could attest to the meetings that have to occur sometimes, when they really want to bring on something new or something big, to try to understand, is this gonna work?
But, and ninety day, the ninety day thing is always took a part from me too, I think it's incredibly unfair when somebody submits it well within that window, and then you guys have to scramble to do that, right? So, I think if we're gonna keep it in ninety days, we kind of need to be hardline on that ninety days, I don't really care what the event is, if it's, you know, if, and this, this is just me speaking personally from my department.
No, I, I think it's good to know.
You know, um, you know, it's not fair that you guys have to rush, and then we all have to scramble to, to do this event that they didn't submit on time. So, I think we need to be hardline on that ninety days, or change that ninety days if we wanna lessen that, or change it in any way, I'm totally fine with that. But, I mean, there's a lot of events that turn in well within that ninety days, and it's, I'm completely fair to you guys, being basically a two person department on this, to have to manage all that and do the back and forth and all of this, and we need the time on that. So, I think we either need to be hardline with that, or change that, that number, um.
I think it's wonderful of you, and cool to it. We do always come up against somebody that says, I forgot, or I thought I did, and I didn't, and.
Sorry.
You know, that's.
What inspires us a little bit, really.
Totally, right, yeah, yeah, we can do this, but you're gonna pay us, and you know, if they, they, them, yeah, you have so much extra to be able to do this.
It's within thirty days, it's three times the amount, right?
Right, exactly, something like that, to, to put a rush on it, and that's totally fine, then it's, then it's maybe worth your time to be able to do it, or something like that. There has to be some sort of consequence that I, I think. Um, I think moving forward, if we're gonna have more events, bigger events, we've gotta start being hardline on it, so that you're not put in a position where, you know, it's just a ton of work on your end, you know, for, for no reason. And I, I think if we start being hardline on that, people won't forget, they realize that if I don't get this in, I'm not gonna have my event, they don't forget it.
Right. And if it's a monetary penalty, that's always a big incentive.
Sure. Yeah, definitely, you see a change in behavior there.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I'll, I'll trust you guys' opinion on that one for sure, um, but I really, it, it always irks me when, you know, when you send an email saying, hey, we gotta get this in on time, cuz somebody didn't turn in the application on time, you know, and that's, that's totally fair to you guys, it doesn't give us enough time to truly review it, and, and it's on the event, not on us.
Or we find out about it, and then we're reaching out, they've already got it scheduled, they've got advertising out, and feel bad about trying to pull it back and say, no, we can't do it.
Right.
Try to be supportive, but at the same time.
You didn't go through the correct process?
Forgiveness isn't always the answer.
Correct, yeah.
I think it's, and I'm happy to take this back to Ann, and maybe we can work through a few things, I think the ninety days, if that's the rule, it should stay. And I don't know if you feel that, um, a new event requires even more than that.
I, I do think so, I think, you know, last year kind of proves that that, um, that adventure race that we had, we all had questions on that, and that was a big discussion that required multiple meetings, right? And that's not, this is gonna happen in ninety days, so yeah, if it's a new event that hasn't been done before, I think that can go up to on the twenty year, or whatever, whatever it feels appropriate, but you know, something like that, I would totally agree that that needs a longer process than establish an event that we already know and work with.
Absolutely. The other thing that might be helpful, and I will look to create some type of a calendar, so that we can see what events are proposed, when they plan to have them, so that we don't have a lot of wonder.
Sure.
It would be wonderful to know what city events that we don't know about. For example, if we have two events on one city and one county, they're gonna occur on the same weekend, and we don't know that, that might be very alarming to just discover it in two weeks' notice or something.
Absolutely.
Well, I was, uh, you know, I, I think there's a lot to address here. And, uh, and I was worried that it would go a little too deep beyond this, the intentions of this one. So if we, I think there should be some effort on a, like a first, a city, county, first responder, almost a committee or something to address the special event uh, process as a whole. Um, and then maybe today we can accomplish maybe some easy steps for, uh, specific dispatch and just getting, getting our names on, on this approval list and making sure that somebody's, uh, aware of these and, and we might have to take these efforts to the city also to make sure that we're aware of these ski joint type of situations. Um, to make sure that dispatch is being addressed as a, as a need or a mandatory need or whatever that case is.
So I wonder when we get him at the city, if I should, um, put that on our agenda for this meeting, just so we're all aware and can discuss it. Concerns be addressed.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah, that's a good idea, but, you know, the city needs to kind of expand that process too and, and do something like the county's doing where we're kind of all involved in this and it seems like that's sort of happening just now with a real big staff.
Yeah, and the city was really, um, opening, I think if anybody wanted more involvement, it's just for awareness, I would just reach out to Andrew Cummins. Um, he's been really great and they really didn't even hesitate to put me on their referral list. I didn't even ask for sign-off ability, I just said, hey, I just wanna see if any of this coming through.
Yeah.
Um, and they automatically put me on sign-off and they didn't make it without that. So I'm sorry I missed the dispatch, well, Mr. Droid, that's my bad, but, yeah.
Cause we have, we have the St. Patty's Day parade coming up here on, what, the seventeenth of course, for ten days.
And that was something which we spoke about the other day too, was like, even if you guys are short-staffed and need help, then, you know, then Sheriff can know about that or we can know about that or city road and bridge, right? City works can know about that and be able to help put out things, whatever it is, so it's not just on you guys and then everybody's on the same page. I was talking with, um, with Sheriff too about like ski drawing and, um, you know, we, we barriers out for the hundred. We don't have barriers out for ski drawing. And somebody could easily come up on one of those, on one of those sidewalks with a car and, you know, things like that. So it's just, if that's gonna continue, you know, but these are going to be big events with large issues, we need to figure out some, for sure.
So Marla, what's the best way to, to advise you of, uh, I think just adding somebody to the review process on this one?
If you wouldn't mind just sending me an email with who, whoever you'd like to add it, that would be perfect. You know, make sure and get him on.
Okay, yeah. Easy enough. Um, any thoughts on who, it should be, I think Paula initially, um, if anybody else on the, I mean, we're, I think we're all on it. You know, except for the, you're not, I don't think you're on this. Cause you're, you're just city and it, it seems like it's only if it's both city and county, that would be like one of the greatest things to change is, you know, part of the, uh, event, uh, application process is who, the only contact the city is if they're come, touching both city and county, but I'm trying to get away from anything, so.
As, as Chief, do you wanna be on there? I mean, it's, like, an event even in the county, maybe more people in the city, so.
If I could just be emailed the event application, just to be aware of it, let's say you have an event coming up that gets approved, if I could just be emailed a copy of the event.
Of course.
Just to be aware, cause maybe we could provide our assistance as well.
And I'm hap- Sure, I'm happy to send you the initial application, especially just to start with, so you can see what it involves and how many people, where it's going to occur.
Cool. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And I think one of the other things, uh, if it's not too hard to change is, uh, so there's, there's mentioned in here of, uh, the extra duty service contract with Boy County Sheriff's Office for additional deputies, uh, or security or higher, traffic patrol, whatever that case. If we can add that similar language, uh, to a dispatch request, it's a.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
And I have the extra duty one, but I'm happy to add a dispatch one.
Okay, and, and maybe we can talk about, um.
I think I, I think you might send it to me, Paula?
Yeah.
I think we made one up.
Yeah.
Cause I did that for a lifetime, right?
Yes, yeah, we, we've used one before, I don't think we've, uh, put fresh eyes on it for twenty twenty-five yet. Just to, maybe one more legal review, um, make sure we're good there, talk about rate adjustments. Uh, cause I don't think there's any mention of rates in here, it's just.
There's not.
Yeah, just contact the sheriff's office for this form, or do you hand out that extra form?
Usually you'll, I send it to them if you've told me that you would like that in that event.
Okay.
We can do that differently, I can just please reach out directly so that you can provide them with that information.
Yeah, I almost feel like, uh, part of the requirement is if you're saying yes to these needs, then, um, then it's a must reach out to this person. Uh, maybe that's the easiest way for like a today fix is if you're requesting additional dispatchers, uh, you must email Paula. And then she can talk through that with them. I mean, I, I think what longer-term goal is, is to go ahead and work on setting requirements based off of, uh, event size. Uh, one of the things we talked about was using historic numbers instead of predictive numbers. Uh, so I've, I've, you know, I'm not gonna call out anybody today, but I've noticed that some of these event numbers require different, uh, requirements. And knowing some of these events, I'm like, well, they're just keeping the number underneath that so they don't expose themselves to a new, uh, requirement set. Um, and, and so, whereas with all these numbers, you know, like for ski drawing, we talked about, we have these numbers in front of us. Ski, the, the app, the app may say, we're expecting five thousand people. And we're like, no, you had twelve thousand four hundred on Saturday alone last year. And over the last three years, we've had this rolling average of over ten thousand people, um, that you need these things. And I think that's kind of, I think what, you know, part of the bigger discussion that we can go towards is, um, making these requirements in place. Like, the expectation, we're gonna have over ten thousand people here, we need X amount of, uh, extra security dispatchers. Um, and that's why people are getting caught up. You know, anyways, that, I don't think we really need to do it.
Well, no, but it can use to happen, right? We just had the, the mountain bike, uh, championships up at C and T, right? They list three hundred to four hundred participants, but really, if one person comes with every one of those, we're up to a thousand. And that's a much bigger event than four hundred kids, right?
Yeah, family of four or five, and the family each weighs around ten people.
Yeah, so we could be up to a thousand, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred very easily. You know, and that becomes a whole different realm rather than just four hundred people.
Right.
Uh, and so we need, uh, we need to start pulling that direction.
Do we have anything that shows, hey, if you have a thousand people, you're gonna need these extra services no matter what?
Roughly.
Well, right now, it can raise it five hundred, and that's because it has to go to the board for approval for anything over five hundred. So I can definitely see where there's times people wanna keep it under that threshold, but they don't want it to have to go to the board for that approval.
Well, I mean, approval of extra services.
I, we haven't had that proposed, but it doesn't mean that.
And that's, that's what we were gonna say, we'll just be on the discussion too, it'd be like, okay, like, yeah, zero to five hundred, it requires this, five hundred to a thousand requires this, you know, whatever it is, and, and we need to start doing that, not in event participants, it's really, but in expected people after that.
Right, yeah, there's some, some, some of the expectations or the requirements, uh, like Marla said, five hundred or more, um, requires approval from the commissioners, um, there's, there's some sanitation facility requirements for different range of people and how many facilities they need to have available, um, and then there's, um, uh, events over five hundred people serving food and drink have certain requirements. So it's kind, it's kind of going with, with those flows, but from a first responder standpoint, and, cause right now it's optional. There, I mean, there's some requirements in here, right? So if you're, uh, your event affects, uh, the normal traffic flow on any county roadway, if the combined total is two hundred fifty more entrance, staff, spectators, so everybody, uh, and you're using a county road, then refer to the requirements of the county sheriff's office. And, and so I, I, as far as I'm aware, I don't have that in any of my policies on what we require for two hundred and fifty more. I think it's more of just like a verbal conversation, like what, what you got going on there, so I think just, uh, creating some standards in there, I know it'd help us a lot. And, cause, you know, well, cause where we're at really is we see these events growing year after year. And, um, and, and we gotta figure out a way, we need, before this gets completely out of control, how to, how to manage this from the first responder standpoint. You know, like I ran into Jeremiah Saturday and we were just standing there talking, uh, one, because he liked to do it, but two, because he couldn't go anywhere else.
They're like, yeah.
I guess we have to be friends right now. Um, so from a first responder, if we have something bad happen, I mean, like we're running old people over to get there, and so trying to get ahead of that stuff before something bad happens is kind of, um.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, but, uh, again.
Maybe I can coordinate with you just a little bit on what you have and need. Maybe we make it part of the application. You need to have dispatch, you need to have the sheriff's department acknowledge that you do not need the additional. Well, anything that they add, you have an extra ambulance or two, that means extra people for, for us that we're gonna need. We are not gonna be able to handle that traffic. Anything like the Rangers for this weekend, that means extra traffic for us on, on the radio, you know? So anything extra for any of our emergencies is gonna be extra for us to handle, so we need to be prepared.
And that's just the radio.
Yeah, that's just the radio, that's not people moving, right, right.
Twelve thousand people making phone calls to you guys about this, this, or this.
Yeah, that's just radio traffic, yes, and that's trying to, yeah, landline phones, nine one one, anything like that. You can see these growing very quickly and getting harder to put your arms around.
Yeah, agreed, and again, I just, I don't want the elements to be on you and Anne constantly, that's a ton of work for two people and you already have a bunch of other stuff to do, you know, and so I just, I, I hate that that's the case, I, I really do.
And we all do, everyone is very, very busy with it.
Totally, absolutely.
You're right, Anne's got the whole lot going on on her plate and this always coincides with building seasons, so.
Yeah.
He wanted to build, you can build a pathway, but just don't block it.
Right, yeah, so if we can just, you know, kind of overhaul the whole process and make it a lot easier, a lot more straightforward and a lot less work on you guys, I guess. And then moving forward in the future, from when we have these bigger, higher people, you know, more events and all that.
Especially if we have historical knowledge, they're going to be big.
Correct, yeah, and then we're able to pull those numbers now, we have, is it Placer that, uh, touched us in?
Placer, yeah.
Or something, uh, I think it's, seems.
Is that what you put it, that was called for?
Saturday. Um, okay, so I kind of see this, uh, happening in maybe two phases, two steps. I think step one, if you guys are okay with this, maybe Jeremiah and I just continue the conversation with Paula about coming up with some now answers to make sure, cause the more we talk about this, the more I see this project timeframe expanding, especially when we're talking about, you know, all of us first responder agencies, talking to the city, talking to the county, like coming up with something pretty solid that we're happy with, you could take the rest of this year, honestly. And so I don't, I don't, I don't wanna have some, you know, effective things that we can implement now, some low hanging fruit that we can grab for the twenty twenty-five season. And so maybe we can just, the three of us work on some quick answers to get tomorrow on hand and say, let's, let's at least get this going for this year. And then in the background, we can work on, uh, the bigger project, especially then process specificity, you can, like, just sound cool for like a two phases.
Yeah, we're like, yeah, we're good.
That's good.
Yeah, I think even Paula just being on the application, getting the applications under that wall will help for sure.
Yeah, at least I would know.
Correct.
To be prepared.
Yeah, yeah, you know the big ones, but.
Yeah, exactly. You'll see most of the applications in the next week or so, everything I have is gonna go back out. So even the little ones, I'm trying to group them to make sense, but hopefully everything will be out, so you'll have a pretty good idea of when to receive.
Yeah, okay, great, yeah, so now's the time to get all that rest, by the way.
So that you'll have an idea of when they're happening.
Oh, yeah.
This is, this would be just county, but we can maybe incorporate the city and maybe throw that in there too.
Well, I think we, you and Claire did, we just requested, just say, hey, can you just let me know?
Just so you just can pass them to the jury.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just email Andrew Cummins. Yeah, and as I said, they were, they were very generous with me, I was like, I really just wanna be notified, I'm not asking for sign-off ability.
You just talked to Andrew about that.
Yeah.
So maybe you just need.
And they gave me sign-off ability and, but, um, but no, I would just say at least just, hey, as a heads up, you know? And we can use ski drawing as an example, right? You know, we, you guys saw increased calls and we'd love to be able to better prepare for that.
Did you go to council about that or just talk to Andrew?
I just talked to Andrew, I think I emailed like Marla and Andrew about it and they're.
Just so she was aware?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, and I'm wondering, you're with ski drawing, now we didn't need to go to TAC and I'm glad we didn't. And, and I'm glad Sarah asked me during it, she said, hey, should we be operating on TAC? I said, let's, let's play it by ear. If call volume picks up, then yes. But was there a plan, the one, in retrospect, now what we need to do better, I need to do better for next year is, um, discuss a backup plan, if we did get overwhelmed, was there a backup plan to call on another dispatcher? Do we have somebody available?
We didn't, there wasn't, just because we, I mean.
Gotcha.
But it happened.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, so I, I kind of talked to Sheriff about this as well, like, we do IAPs for the hundreds, right? And there was probably more people in town for a longer period of time than there were for the hundreds.
Yeah.
For ski drawing, and so again, if it's gonna be that sort of level event again, we really should do IAPs, but that piece is already worked out beforehand, right?
Yep, you're right.
Everybody's on the same page with us, with you guys, with dispatch, with everybody, hey, if this happens, then this, if this happens, then this, if we have a bunch shares this channel, here's what that channel's for, here's the plan here, so everybody's on the same page with that. And that event has not been that big in the past, we've never had to do an IAP before, for.
No, we used to.
Did we?
Yeah, it was led by city PD, um, the past few years, I think just with the turmoil, I reached out and offered that. I was told everything was under control and not to worry about it, so I backed off.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
If that's something we wanna bring back, um.
Yeah, we probably should.
Yeah, I think it's, it'd be a great idea, it works really well for the hundreds and I think it really works for those sorts of things too.
That was a much larger than I expected, but thank goodness there were, uh, uh, I, and when I saw the size of that crowd, I thought, oh man, this, we're gonna be dealing with a lot. I was shocked how little we had to deal with. We got lucky.
There was a lot of traffic though, a lot of, uh, vehicle traffic.
Yeah, yeah, we got the whole ready reports.
That, yeah, and that still takes a lot because of the current plate, you know, so it is still a lot, you know, it's overwhelming, you know, so.
All right, yeah, sorry, got off track there.
No, 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 it wasn't at all, no.
All right, that's, that's good.
That's a really good point to link up.
Yeah. Okay, I feel, you guys, any other thoughts on, on that, uh, item? No, like, uh.
I think I would encourage maybe the two of you to kind of have some conversations with Duffy.
Okay.
Um, he's really open to those conversations, but maybe almost kind of like a rehash of this year, um, and I would kind of start to prep him for these changes.
Okay, good.
If we're gonna start doing more intense planning, I would have, I would give you some conversations with him.
Okay.
Yeah, it's taken, it's taken a few years to get the contract on, but you have to work that well this year.
Yeah.
It's gonna be something else, it's like, it's okay, I would probably should.
And he hooked me on Friday, I'll let that, that, that be an IAP event.
That's good, yeah.
Just gonna put that out there.
He's a good guy, man, he's, it's a, it's a lot to take on.
Yeah, I, I do think it would be beneficial to have conversations with him early, early and frequently, if, if we wanna look at changes,
Yeah.
especially if we need to bring in more dispatchers or if there's changes in rates and everything.
Right.
Ski drawing's a pretty limited financial event, um.
Right.
It's not a good push, yeah.
So I think early and often conversations.
Yeah. Okay. All right, we can move on to item B, and this is something we've been doing on, uh, on a routine, um.
Marla, I think that's all we have.
I was gonna ask.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're good, yeah.
You're welcome to stay, but.
I didn't wanna intrude in your, but if there was nothing else, I will, you can always, please reach out to me with anything.
Perfect, yeah, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Guys, happy weekends.
You too.
Yeah, you too. Perfect, yeah, so moving on to, uh, item B, updates and discussion on current operations and topics. Uh, something we've been doing in absence of a, uh, director, and so again, thanks to everyone for stepping up and helping out in these different areas. Uh, it's been great to really see a lot of progress in these different areas. Things we're gonna address today, uh, training, we'll try to stay, stick in this order, training, recruitment, retention policy, project management, oversight and supervision, and then budget, and so we'll work our way down that list. And, uh, missing Chief Daly here, we'll start off with training and Paula, do you have any updates for us on, uh, how training's going? Any progress on any of those FTO projects we were talking about in the past?
Um, so, training, we are looking, uh, to, we have a lot of redundancy on it and looking to see where the training is gonna benefit our dispatchers better and what we have, what fits our agency, what fits our community the best. So we are looking at that, I have Daniela and Mary also looking at it and, um, we are gonna have a meeting with us and hopefully Chief Daly, when he is available, so that we can discuss it and not just have paper to put in the bus and to make an action plan for it, so we could, um, get that moving forward since we are gonna have a lot of people coming in and training. Have the best training that we can have for them. Um, and other than that, you know, just finding new stuff and getting stuff that we didn't have or that they didn't know for training, so, um. getting stuff that we didn't have or that they didn't know for training, so, um, we're, I'm just looking at that and getting them their information, and you know, meeting with whoever wants to do, hey, you have ideas, come in, let's see how we could do this better.
Sounds good, any update from Chief on the, uh, his, his, uh, interactions with Summit County, uh, are we getting anything from over there? No, okay.
No, I have not heard anything, I do have their, uh, training, and I'm looking at that also, I have, so I'm looking at it and seeing how.
Okay. You have that, their training documents, okay, great.
Hmm, yep, so that, and that's what we're gonna be needing on also the next couple of weeks
That's good.
to go over that and see how we can streamline that and see if it is a little bit better than what we have right now.
Hmm. Um, uh, update on FTO class?
Um, it's in July.
For both of them?
For both Daniela and Mary, yeah.
Mary, okay, okay, are they going to the same class?
Yes.
Okay. Who, Mary and Daniela?
Yes.
Um, that's in July, you said?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we have somebody out of FTO by then, that's in FTO now, okay, so we'll, you covered July's, if you don't break up, we'll send you two people.
Yes. Oh, yeah, and it's in Vail, so, no, it's three days.
Right, and that's. Yes, okay.
And so they have the option of, like, I think they're just gonna go and then come home every night, so, that's what they prefer also, so.
Okay. Awesome. Okay. Great, anything else on the training front?
No, and just looking at with the IPOS and all that, you know, whatever training we can get to utilize everything that we have, that we work with every day. Trying to get that so that we have adequate tool, training and not just reading all of it. So, um, I'm getting lots of issues involved so that we could have that for our dispatchers. So, and it takes a little bit of a process, but, so like with the IPOS, they told me pick three days and they would do training with our dispatchers. And then we have that monthly thing that everybody does an IPOS and understands, you know, what we have, you know, and I think you mentioned, I'll get with you so that we can go over, cause I have a lot of questions though.
Yeah, and I have some updates on that as well.
Okay, awesome.
All right, great, I'll move on to recruitment retention, we have Jeremiah, Dan and Paula on that task force, how's that coming along, guys?
Well, we haven't had any interviews lately, but you're testing on Monday, you said?
Wednesday, I do have one, I just need to send you guys an invite for next week.
Wednesday.
Okay.
Um, and I guess that's one of my questions, do you want me to just send you an invite and see, just send it out and see if you guys are available, you guys show up?
Yeah. Sure.
Yeah, sure.
Like I did the last time?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And how about the director position, where is that posted right now?
Yeah, it's on my notes, bring that up, I'm glad you said something, cause right now, I think it's just Claire and I that are seeing those applications come, come in, so.
I'm sure there have been none.
Really?
We have one, yeah.
Oh, we have one?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't get the notification for that one.
Yeah, so there's definitely a break in that, um, I think what I could do is add, or we can, or H R, somebody can add Paula to that list, so she's notified, like, hey, we have a new um, application that came in for that director position, and then let the three of you guys run, run with that, uh, but I think that's, you know, um, or, or how do we want to handle that? You know, as a board, when we see these director applications, and it went, uh, before, it was again Claire and I, and we would just kind of talk through the, the different ones that would pop up. Any, any thoughts on how we should handle the director applications?
Yeah, I mean, so one came in now, um, shoot it to Paula, she can shoot it to Jeremiah and I, and if we look at it and say, wow, this is compelling, I don't see any reason why we couldn't set up an interview.
Yep.
Yep.
You see it?
I'm looking at it now.
Okay, yeah.
Cause we, recently we had a, a person apply to be a dispatcher, very compelling resume application, but then we got to know the person good, and we realized we don't need this person involved in our organization.
Yeah.
Based on police calls and dealings with them.
Right. Right.
It was quite comical, actually.
It's interesting, huh?
Right.
Yeah.
Reality slapped us in the face.
Yeah, so I'm good with that, I could just, uh, or, or Claire and I can shoot it out, this is kind of this weird dynamic with.
Sure, yeah.
So you can add, you can add people, I cannot, but also it says I'm getting them, it doesn't.
Hmm. Okay. It's like you're not getting notified, yeah, it seems to intermess with Jazz H R, whether I get an email notification, I actually have to go on Jazz H R to see if there's anything new. But yeah, I don't, the weird dynamic is Paula, in her position, being associated with hiring the director, I think it's good to have, I like a value input from current employees for, for those that are about to be a leader in that role, but do we want Paula in the involved with the hiring, uh, process? I mean, you know, from, you know, at least the initial steps, cause we are seeing, and I can send it out, Claire can send it out to you guys, and let you guys decide on how you want to manage that, and Paul is part of the, um,
Point.
the interview board, I think that's okay.
Well, I, I kind of feel like, I don't mind scheduling or whatever, but I think it's really more, you guys should decide.
Yeah, right.
What, who you want to interview.
Yeah.
I don't mind being, being in the process of getting them here or anything like that, or stuff like that, but I feel like it's, a director should be you guys.
Right.
That's a good point, yeah.
That's it, yeah.
No, I think you should be involved as an observer and give them, you know, what you think of that person, how you think about them in the department, how you think you work with them, that whole thing, uh, but as a year to be a problem with that, yeah.
Yeah, and so, uh, I guess, a thought is, you know, and I'm fine with this, just keeping, uh, you two as part of that initial filtering process.
Hmm.
Try to go through, uh, cause anything beyond you two now is official meeting stuff.
Yeah.
Or if you have questions, I'd like for you to find out more, what that position may look like on our end, sure, let me know.
Right, and it, it's easy, right, it's good.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's awesome, so I'll just do that, I'll start sending it to you guys.
Okay. At least we have one, that's the one we have, anything worth looking at?
I don't think so.
Yeah. Here we go.
We got one.
And it's, uh, nothing out of concert.
So we're probably using the hiring company, cause I was supposed to start in our trade.
No, we're, um, we're a little late on, on engaging this, so. Yeah, I'm sure that'll be brought up in the next meeting or two, when we're, when we're getting good, but. I mean, and since we're on that topic, is that, is that a fair move, give us another month before we talk about, it's not on the agenda anyways, and talk about using, uh, K R W.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'll have K R W to the join us soon.
Yeah. Anything else on the, uh, recruitment retention front? Uh, policy. What you guys got?
Yeah, um, so all I have is thank you guys for reviewing, um, that first draft of the IPOS policy at the last meeting, um, I haven't relooked at it, I've been having a lot of good, really conversations over the course of this month. So hopefully by the time I come back, or, shouldn't say that, I'll come back with a new draft, um, a little bit more informed, with some better conversations, so this month has been a little bit more just kind of fact finding. Um, I met with Ben Bills over at the El Paso Teller County Authority, um, had a really good conversation with him about how they structure, um, they're a little bit different than us, their authority is kind of overarching, and then they work with individual P S apps um, in the different counties, so a little bit of a different structure than us, but still had some really good conversations regarding their uses of Everbridge, how they're kind of pushing training, um, and how they kind of interact with the P S apps when it comes to IPOS, emergency alerting, along with kind of defining what emergency alerts can be used for, which I think is really important. Um, had some really good conversations around missing persons, um, and how that works for them, so that was really nice. Um, I did have a conversation yesterday with our territory manager from Everbridge, um, good and bad parts of it, uh, I shouldn't say bad frustrating parts of it. Uh, but she is going to, hopefully within the next two weeks, look at seeing if they have, um, kind of an Everbridge University, like, training progression. I know there's a lot in there, um, so hopefully I asked her, it's like, do you guys have any type of like self-study course or self-study like schedules or how you would progress with these and everything, instead of just kind of going in and being like, this looks good, this looks good, um, so hopefully she'll have that over to me. Um, I asked again, will they bring, like, can O E M pay them, like, I want to make it very clear, I was volunteering O E M's money. Um, I was like, O E M will pay you to come to Lake County and sit down with our dispatchers and do a training and go through it, and, cause I know we talked, when we were talking about Reachwell, you and Chelsea mentioned you guys don't know the full capabilities of Everbridge.
Right.
And there's a lot in there, so I was like, can we bring someone on site? And they were like, no, we don't offer that, I'm like, for how much money will you offer?
Everybody's impressed, yeah.
And they're like, no, we just don't offer it, um, they will do professional consulting hours, um, so they're, she's reaching out to the professional consulting team just to see if that may be something that you individually would like to do, um, but I was like, will that be training, they're like, no, it's not training, like, then what are you consulting me on? And then I gently reminded them that our contract is up for renewal last year, next year, sorry. Um, but I still think Everbridge is, uh, really cream of the tops, top tier, and I heard that too from El Paso Teller Authority. Um, we're using a really great system, we're just trying to figure out how to best utilize that system. Um, so because Everbridge isn't really giving me what I want, I have made a connection over at D H S E M, um, so I'll send that email out today and copy you on it. Um, Elizabeth Owensby's been working with Everbridge and Alerting Authorities for her entire career, she's an incredible wealth of knowledge, um, and she will absolutely come here. I've been told, she's been voluntold, um, but she will absolutely come here and do a training, do whatever you guys want, so we'll try to get a conversation with her on the books. Um, and it may be nice to kind of have that third party as well, not, um, drinking the Everbridge Kool-Aid. We gotta stop having these meetings on Fridays.
Like, Everbridge is a cult?
Um, the other one too, is that I heard Kimberly call up from the Laramie Emergency Telephone Authority speak at our conference earlier in February. Um, she offered anyone in the room, any of their training resources, they've been doing monthly situation, uh, just exercises for dispatchers to go in, they have a month to do them. They log in, complete the training and send it to sign off, um, she's offered any of those scenarios to anybody that wants them, so an email, I'll send out, copy you on it, see what we can get from her.
Yeah, Kimberly called, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so she's great, so hopefully be getting, we'll be getting some more resources to help with that training, um.
Every, everything that I go or I attend, I always try to reach out and see how it will help us, benefit us, you know, so, you know, even with the IPOS, I did take the, what is it, two fifty seven thing that for supervisors, learned a lot from that, you know, and how it's ran and
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Actually with, you know, the missing children, it went into that, I gave everybody an update through C D I, how to do an Amber Alert, gave them all the procedures, you know, so it's stuff that I'm learning and pushing out also for our dispatchers in that, and, um, with Everbridge, they are doing the Everbridge University online, you know, and I'm taking courses with that too, to learn how does Everbridge work.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Um, one thing that I noticed in Everbridge that I, that I would like to see is like, can everyone who has the authority to add and take away, please update it? Do you know what I mean? There's someone I got me from, uh, EMS, hey, could you just give me out of this, I haven't had, I haven't had to do this, and I asked them to redock to you.
And I do that for county employees, bring their reaches out to me from H R anytime they have a termination, um, and I remove them from the employee system.
Just because, guys, people forget and then they move on to another thing or whatever, so, hey, you know, this call, why?
Yep. Yeah, no, I'm handling like county employees, I think you do a good job of handling EMS.
Okay, awesome.
That's why that's why we log in.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I totally forgot about that, I will, do that before we leave, yeah.
They wouldn't send me their emails, I don't know why, I don't have a soul, email or something, but.
Um, I'll fix that before we leave, um, yeah.
Yeah, and the one, the one issue we've had with Everbridge recently has been, um, or consistently anyways, has been, I think what they're doing is clicking the hospital, not the EMS section, when EMS is asking for a backup page, and all of the hospital employees are getting the, that, so they need to like
Okay.
go under the hospital and go to the EMS section, I have to look at that, exactly, but.
So I think, I think it's what's happening also is that we have so many templates in there, that we need to do those templates and get rid of some. I see there was quite a few, you know, like, why do we have so many?
Right, cause I, I have a few that come across on the same, the way that the SAR ones do, and I don't know that, if it's just the same number and I'm getting on the same text thread, or if they're doing it under what SAR should be as well, so like, the, our backup pages come in at the same text thread that the SAR ones do, so I don't know, I can't remember if that was different yet, but.
Yeah, I did, and that's part of the training also, because I, I was not, you know, I was like, okay, when you're pet, when you're utilizing that and, and sending out a message, it's gonna tell you how many people were contacted for that message.
Right.
And I'm like, we need to make sure that we're contacting the right people and not eighty four people when we're doing that, so, is them and them learning that also?
Right. Totally. Totally, yeah.
So, yeah, we, we are having conversations about that stuff, you know?
Yeah. Yeah.
Claire, do you get notified about SAR also, uh, if they have a SAR volunteer leaving?
No, they manage their own, yeah.
They own Everbridge, okay, okay, so you.
Or they should be, they.
And then, uh, like the Lake County Fire is part of that, I imagine, P D, and.
And I know that they have a minute in there, yeah, and there's a lot of people that are much.
So they're getting, so they're. There's a lot of our agencies that need to update those constantly.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that'll help also too with, you know, to make our updates and that they go to the right people. So, yeah, if everybody would do that, and then we can go and do that too, you know, would be, we want to do those templates, make sure we have them correct in what we're doing.
And that's what, um, El Paso has also offered us as well, is all of their template usage and everything, um, they use, they use Everbridge a little bit differently than we do, but they've also offered us their templates.
And I mean, any, to me, I'm like, I'm wanting to take anything.
Yeah.
And also with the policy net, I sent you, will how to get them to, um, Frontline, did you guys ever get that email to go not to Frontline?
Yeah, I think I did, I'm not sure that I've actually did, I think I did.
Yeah, I have to go make a check.
No. Okay, I'll get it.
I think I did get that email though.
Yeah, okay. Just, just to make sure, you know, I, I really wanna put our stuff in one place and not have it in twenty different.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's that program called?
Frontline?
Frontline, that's it.
Um, so the last thing I have for you all, something I had Sam over in my office put together, um, I think it's for really first responders, everyone involved here. Just trying to clarify some use of language and terminology and everything, so this is a link in the packet that you guys can read it, it is a first draft, so if there's something you want to see put in here or something that isn't quite reading right to you, please let me know, and Sam and I can make those edits. But we really just wanted to lay out what is IPOS, what is Everbridge, um, what are our emergency alerts versus our W I As, um, and when are they best used, and what are the limitations around each? Um, so this first sheet here just goes over, um, IPOS, the, um, and then also W I As, the wireless emergency alerts, um, highlighting kind of the character limits, some of our language, um, abilities with those, um, and also just the difference, right? Um, and then we also have Everbridge, what we use here for our emergency alerts, how they can be received, again, character limits and language access, and really knowing the difference. Um, and then this third page, going back to what is the Integrated Public Alert Warning System, IPOS, what does it hit when we use those, um, how do people receive them? Um, and also when is it, when can be used, so obviously not all of these apply to us, we do not have volcanoes in Lake County, I'm not anticipating a nuclear accident. But we put these on here really to highlight, like, these are used in the most extreme of extreme situations, um, IPOS are for the really bad days, and then we also have Everbridge as a way to communicate with our community more effectively. Um, so that is there for you guys as reference in your packets, please tell me if there's something you would like, like to be added or changed or anything, or something isn't making sense, um, I'd really like to have this as a tool. Um, the next step is I would really like to work on developing, um, a checklist for first, both dispatch and our first responders, so when our first responders in the field are asking for an alert,
Hmm.
dispatch has something to refer to, to make sure everything's being included, so that, so, an example, um, so this is coming out of Boulder, um, an example on that, or is it Vale? Sorry, I can't remember which one I heard, but, um, when somebody asks for an alert, um, the dispatcher can go through the checklist, and one of the boxes on there is, do we need to stop any trains? And they can go back to the first responder and say, hey, have you considered this, do we need to stop trains, do we need to put this into effect? Um, but just giving something for our first responders in the field when they're asking for those alerts to reference, and our dispatchers to make sure that we're covering everything. So this is trying to kind of set the terminology to develop that checklist, is this helpful?
Yeah, super, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Big Sam, um, and that is all I have.
Deeper in the, in the weeds, I guess, like, from that, I like to see, hey, if, what is our continuity, what is our, you know, what, what, what are, who do we have as MOUs? I've never seen that, haven't seen that, have I found it? Hey, if we can't access something, who do we go to, you know, do we have an MOU with our radio stations, or, or, you know, stuff like that, too? If we have an alert that can, you know, that we can't put out for whatever reason, cause it's not working, you know, or that secondary persons, if we have any MOUs? And that they really, really about that, any people help teams, you know, I, I, and I don't know, cause I don't see them, like, we don't have access to it, so maybe that's a medium, huh?
Can you be a little bit? Can you be a little bit more specific?
Like, let's say we couldn't access Everbridge.
Okay.
Do we have an MOU with maybe training, with maybe summit with people, hey, can you send this up for us?
No, we do not, and it's been, we've talked about that at the regional level, how can we better integrate with different, especially if we're using the same tools, like JP uses Everbridge.
And I. Right.
Um Summit uses Everbridge, um there are some heavy legalities to overcome there, it's not.
And I think a lot of them do, and I know IPods will do it for us, but you really have to know what you're putting in there and saying in there.
Yeah.
For them, you know, and have that, so those are kind of some of the issues that I have and will be, you know. Just for, you never know, if if everyone is having a bad day, you know.
No, we don't have those MOUs in place, the state can send alerts on our behalf, um they try not to do that unless it's true end of the world.
Yeah, right. Right. Right.
I can see that being pretty difficult with uh just the approval process, you know, and I'd be hesitant to give that authority to JCP County to make a message on our behalf.
Well, we would have to give it to them though, like.
Well, I would. Well, I would also give them all of the data that we have, so is it okay with everyone that signed up for Lake County Emergency Alerts, do we have that?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Okay, does it really almost in some ways sell that information to, like, because we're saying, hey JP, you can now access our database of all seventy thousand signups we have.
Right. Right. Yeah.
So it's, it's a really hard thing to work through, we've talked about it, um kind of on a regional level and it's, it's messy.
Yeah.
Um, don't feel bad, I don't think a lot of people have done a good job. I think inner, I think inner county PSAPs, like if we're looking at cities, like Teller County is a good example, they have some good MOUs in place, but at the end of the day, they're all under.
Never. One, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else on the policy side?
I'm sure I have zombie apocalypse on my HPA, so.
Do you?
Perfect, I'm that in.
I do actually, yeah, I do whatever, I leave it on there every year so that that it's like seeing people pay attention.
Do you? Yeah.
When I look at, because I'm like, hey guys, review this, whatever it is, and I know that people actually read it if they ask me about the zombie apocalypse, they're like, is this real?
Why not?
Like.
Bird influences coming for us, there are geese falling out of the sky apparently from HPAI, so you know, if that's how I go, I get taken out by a goose.
Totally, yeah.
I've seen real life zombies uh downtown too.
All the geese though.
I I like asked, I was like, you know, if I get taken out by a goose that has HPAI, am I killed by the goose or am I killed by highly packed lunch and you and it runs on? I don't know, like, it's.
So what's? Is this what keeps you up at night?
Absolutely.
Definitely got your goose.
Whichever one is most dramatic, keep it so that like.
Yeah.
We'll move on. Um so project management stuff, um, do you have anything?
Uh the only thing we did was the nine one one we just talked about, so that's all I have.
Okay, cool, uh Paul, would you mind giving us an update on our new radios?
So, it was supposed to be the back hall, everything that the state is doing is supposed to be done by the fifth, I haven't heard anything. Uh from Christie Connor, who is overseeing that, I haven't got anything from her, so I'll reach out and, you know, hey, what's the update on it?
Mm-hmm.
To see where we're at, that's the only piece that we're missing, once we get that piece in, then we can move forward. I keep Motorola updated all the time as to what's happening. And um that's how they're making their decisions to come in, to get the radios installed, so it looks like we're going April, May, right now, for that. So.
And it was supposed to be, what, next week, I think, they were supposed to be here to install them?
Yeah.
But they can't without the back hall.
No, we can't do it without the back hall, so that's the biggest thing, and I mean, it's the state, but. I could tell, but.
But Motorola's been great on updating us uh with like the uh um the potential issues of keeping it on the schedule, they said it would be uh potentially what, six thousand dollars?
Yeah.
If they would have showed up, if they had nothing to do and had to reschedule, so they gave us that heads up and we're avoiding those.
Yeah. Right, and that's not ready. Extra cost and costs.
Yes.
So, um.
So delays.
Making sure everyone is gets information as soon as possible. As soon as I get it, I dish it out and then Motorola will let us know and they can make that and then let us know so that we can prepare also. For that and make sure, everything that they needed, Motorola needed when they came and did the install for the radios. Everything and like that has been completed, like with our, um, we had to put in a new plug three, what was it? Three, three something?
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know.
Right, that was done, yeah.
Electricity, yeah, that's done, that's taken care of, we got all that, everything, we're just, like I said, it's just the back hall that we're waiting for.
Cool, thank you.
Well, you're into all that radio stuff too, I don't know if it's a Motorola thing or a Doug thing, um but Lake Command is awful lately.
I know, hmm.
It's been awful, and I don't know why, like I, I was calling Summit just fine, but I was from the base station, but. Um but I mean, the crews they did today couldn't, I mean, they they couldn't hear each one, they couldn't air mail one, we couldn't have any communication with them. It's been awful lately, and they've been switching to dispatch because of dispatching a little bit better, so I don't know if it's um, eh, I don't know.
I had them switch on Monday, when we had that thing, I was like, I, I heard that and I had them all switch to dispatch.
Yeah. Correct.
Because it was working better.
Right.
I don't know, they need like an upgrade or something, or an install, whatever it is.
Yep. Right.
Um, that would be a Doug thing, so get with Doug and see, and it could have been what, I don't know. What it could have been, but one of the things like I, we had our meeting for supervisors and I did ask Sheriff's Office, like, I could hear through the radio.
Yeah.
So is what, I was like, if this would have worked for the meantime, have an airpiece in the radio for dispatchers? Because it's very frustrating for us when we can't hear.
Yeah.
We can um send out, but to receive it is not a good thing, so.
You mean that, or a handheld radio?
Yeah, the handheld, the PACS, yeah.
Yeah. That was working better than actual radios.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, neither did we, so even they were, they were still in and out to whatever call that was, and there was a few in the road that happened.
Yep.
And even when vehicles and the mobiles might even access, you just couldn't understand what they were saying at all, it was like inaudible.
Okay, so do you mind reaching out to Doug?
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to Doug and ask him if there's something that he, we can do, if he can come in and have Matt look at it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. Kind of along those lines, budget lines too, Paul, would you mind reaching out to um the the county and really figuring out where we're at with our Motorola payment? Um you know, there's, there were terms established of uh percentages, percentages that would be paid at different parts of the process. Just figuring out where we're at, um with a lot of the transition we've had with our finance office, with the commissioners. Uh this is a big, big ticket item, wanna make sure that we're getting ahead of this before we're, our backs are against the wall, so could you do some research in all that?
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, you can see where we're at, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. What's up? Um IT changes uh that we're exploring, so for a little bit of background. Um county has had its own ID, uh IT department back on and off, uh they currently use a third party called um Applied Tech. And the Sheriff's Office, uh I think Amy Reyes switched to Pro Velocities, now Iron Edge. Um so we're looking at changing that back to more of a county IT, um that, that, because there's no other department, I think. Or office in Lake County that does something different, we're the only ones. And uh so of course with dispatch being underneath the Sheriff's Office before, now, um the, so dispatch has been underneath Iron Edge also. Um so dispatch and Sheriff's Office, this is a monthly bill of approximately fifty five hundred dollars a month. Um Liz has presented to us a uh the Applied Tech option, what that looks like, it's about two thousand dollars a month less. Um and that's for both dispatch and Sheriff's Office, um so, in having our own local IT. So Paula had a meeting with Liz yesterday on that, and so just so everybody's aware that there's probably gonna be some IT changes. Um I, I don't think we budgeted for um for E nine one one to pay any IT. Other than the county general contribution, and so that was like a bill split that we never really discussed, that the Sheriff's Office was paying for uh IT needs for dispatch. And now this brings it all underneath the county, which I think fits underneath that fifteen thousand dollar umbrella nicely, you know, so. Um as long as there's no like major concerns about this IT switch process from Iron Edge uh to the county. We'll continue along that process and Paula has been working to make sure that they're CGS compliant. And whatever training certifications that they need, uh is gonna be accomplished. The goal is when we make that transition, that it's seamless, of course, we'll see how that goes, but just FYI, anytime we're playing around with wires and computers. There's usually some sort of pickup that we have to endure. Uh but Paula, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, no, just meeting with Liz and Justin yesterday, you know, we were all pretty much on the same page. Of what we'd like to see and, you know, everything like that, and how we can move forward to IT, just because sometimes like Friday, Lex went down, our cat. And then we had Daniella had to go downstairs and start pushing buttons, and and to me it's like. Yes, we should know, I should know how the systems work and everything like that, some sort, but I'm not IT.
No.
I shouldn't have to go down there, FaceTime and be like, is this the right button I pushed? Am I gonna take everybody down? You know, so to me, having a person here on site is more beneficial. You know, and we're talking through things and, you know, what they haven't had experience with and what we have and what our systems have and. If they know anything about it, so we had a good conversation yesterday, it was great, and we were both happy with it, and after we laughed, so. Yeah.
Okay, so FYI for everyone that's moving there, uh last thing for project management is the construction deal going on in the building. Um we had initial conversations with the architect that came here in person, we walked him through everything, showed him dispatch and the jail etcetera. And um so we're still moving forward with that, and uh dispatch is gonna be affected. How, not quite sure, goal is, we're trying to get the uh, basically jail moved to the first floor, just for. For uh safety reasons mainly and and flow reasons, um so if we're able to do that, we're able to keep the jail operations. Uh or hopefully we can during construction, keep the jail operations going under, while we're under construction and dispatch. Without moving, that would be ideal, I feel like, don't move and don't touch them, and then if we can have, if dispatch is moving during the construction project, have that construction work completed. And then we'll have to, we've already had conversations with IT, Motorola, um and uh. I don't know who else would be involved in that, but just trying to prepare for that. Um rough estimate is maybe the end of this year, early next year, hammers might be flowing, so we'll, we'll see how that goes, but um. We'll keep everybody updated on that. But it's exciting, you know, it's something new, and I'm glad you brought up the training area idea, I think that's, you know, if you guys have ideas on all this stuff, you know, bring it up.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Me, bring it up to Paul or anybody else who's in, involved in this construction project, be like, hey, this would be cool if we had this. And I think the training area, that's a, that's, you know, maybe separated from the main calls going on would be beneficial. Anything else on project management stuff? No, all right, we'll move on to supervision oversight, um Paul, Paul had something, you talked about overtime last time, Paul was doing a ton of work. Um it was kind of red flagged with how much overtime you had, and uh you know, we wanna make sure that you're, you're okay. Uh we don't wanna drive you into the ground through this period and turn you into a zombie, which we're prepared for.
Totally, yeah. I'm not.
Um but, yeah, what, did you have anything for us on that?
I just, you know, with that, I would just like to see if it's o- okay. Um so I was called in on Sunday to shift, so, and I still worked Monday. But when I do that, I have things already, like scheduled meetings and stuff like that, and I feel like they're very important for us. You know, that I attend those things just to bring back stuff, to make changes and stuff, so sometimes I am, I do have overtime, sorry. But I would like to keep it at, you know, even if you guys would approve, hey, ten hours maybe a week, not to exceed that. I I'm more stressed of keeping the eighty, the forty hours a week than I am to do overtime, to be honest, just because it's like, ah, I can't get overtime, you know, I'm. Trying not to try to fit so much into something, you know, but just finding that rhythm for me, so that I'm not over scheduling things. And I'm not, you know, because I know every Monday I'm working dispatch, every other Tuesday I have it, so on those dispatch days, I'm not scheduling things, you know. So it it's a little bit of adjustment, it'll get there.
Yeah.
You know, for me, but I'm just saying, hey, this is ten hours, we want to report to you after ten hours, hey, it's more than ten hours. And be like, is it okay, or something that I feel like I really need to have this, you know, this extra hours or something to that effect, like that.
Yeah, a hundred percent, I'm, I mean, I'm fine with the ten hour thing as, as a marker to use of, uh you know, reaching out to myself or on Chief Daily. Um or both of us. I think um, the, the issue was, and I don't remember exactly what the time card was, but you had like thirty, forty hours of overtime.
It was, yeah.
And that was, you know, that's, that's too much for you as a human being, and then it's really tapping into our overtime budget where, I mean, we're, like, the number was, 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 was pretty crazy. Um so that's more of the issue I'm bringing up, I'm not trying to micromanage you.
Yeah. Well, no, I get it though, because I was working every holiday, so that gives me an extra twelve hours for that.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Do you know what I mean? That's gonna show on that.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
So, and my thought was, is hey, I'll give it to Daniella, let her work that and I'll just pick up a bucket check. You know, stuff like that, you know, to, to manage that, you know, because I don't want us to be over budgeted, I mean, sure. I'm like, I'm a stickler for, I was looking at money, wherever we can save, I will save, you know, so.
Just really just take the blinders off every once in a while, make sure that you're not so hyper focused on, I gotta do this, this and this, and next thing you know, you're, you're working eighty hours a week. So that, that was the main.
Good time manager.
Yeah, yeah, you can cut hours, cut hours if you have to work. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up was the uh, the whole ICE issue that we're encountering right now, so um. Couple weeks ago was put out that, uh ICE put out seven hundred thousand ICE detainers into NCIC. And so our, our chances of running into this, um anytime we run somebody is increased quite a bit recently, and that's, you know, gonna affect us. But you're gonna get the notice, and we had this issue, so we can learn from it, is we had um that pop up with somebody we arrested. There was an ICE detainee on it, and the ICE detainers are uh, they could, they, they look a little uh persuasive. And um, and so there's a lot of issues, we don't have to dive into all those right now, but just wanted to, wanted to make sure your dispatchers were aware that there's a lot more of those, when we run into them. Uh let's make sure we're reading these, now the first page is, says it's an ICE detainer. Big question is civil versus criminal, those words aren't on there, so that's one thing that's complicated. Uh the second page, it actually says this is a warrant for the arrest of blah blah blah, and that looks like an arrest warrant, and then it's signed by an ICE supervisor. You know, our warrants need judicial review, so we had to make sure that, that, that if we're seeing on a warrant, that it's, it's issued by a judge.
So what we see on our side when we get there, they just send us a message saying that this person could be held for ICE.
Right.
You know, but we never see the warrant, we don't get the warrant on our side.
Well, I think we might be able to, because that's where we got the printout from the last one.
We don't. From.
Because I don't know how, I, I, I believe it was printed from dispatch.
Well, I mean, we don't see, we just see like, we see the warrant, but we see that it could. Don't arrest because of this.
Right, but when you print it up, it's confusing, that's what confused us, we're like, what, you know, so anyways, just FYI on that one, make sure you're passing that one, so.
Yeah, it's different. And actually, there might be some training on that and on some procedure.
Yeah.
Do the staff any other things, huh?
Yeah.
Could you go where your officers go to staff in?
Yeah.
And I like always see them at all at once.
We can bring that printout to say, this is, this is a, you know, essentially we'll determine this is a civilized uh detainer, which uh is.
Right.
Especially if we're getting more, just really good training on that, so that we give it right and well.
Yeah. Yeah, it's gonna, yeah, it's all.
Definitely. Getting it with like a little crossing the last word, but.
Well, this way it reads, yeah, anyway, it'd have confused uh um, it, you know, for your staff too.
Yeah.
Uh so if they're, you know, the problem that we had was a middle of the night thing, and so the officers, deputies that were on, were trying to figure this out.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, you know, we worked through it, but it's good to know before we have this issue, because Colorado is a state law that prohibits from us uh, from housing. On that, on that alone, so if we do a traffic stop on somebody.
Right.
And they end up arrested because of this confusion, so we wanna avoid those, those issues. Um that's it on that one, any other thoughts on supervision front? And move on to budget. The question I had was, uh so we paid the, the general fund amount, fifteen, a thousand dollars, did you go, is there a due date on that?
They're just gonna do it internally, so I responded back to the emails, like, do you need us to code this, and basically the county just sent the invoice to us for our record keeping.
Okay.
And they're just gonna move the money, and it sounds like finance is gonna look at the treasurer's office on how best to code that.
Yeah, yeah, the transfer.
Okay.
But I have an email back from Nikki saying, don't worry about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
How about for twenty twenty five?
It is for twenty twenty five.
No, we never paid twenty four.
They didn't invoice us for twenty four.
Oh, that was a twenty five invoice?
That was the twenty five invoice.
Okay, so we need, um, okay, so we need to, we need to pay twenty four, I think that.
I didn't see it.
Integrity, sir.
No, I was thinking, I was thinking the same.
I'll go watch you guys. Uh, Roger that, uh, pay, uh, payroll change forms for twenty, we talked about this last time, about getting all the, uh, incentives and twenty twenty five pay scale in place. And have completed all those payroll change forms for everybody, and, uh, Tim approved them yesterday, so.
Oh, I apologize, that is for twenty four.
Okay.
Sorry, my bad, that was for twenty four.
Oh, okay. Okay, that that was my confusion.
My bad. My bad.
Uh, then twenty twenty five, uh, is there, I, I don't think there's a due date, according to the IGA or bylaws or.
It's not that there's no, no.
It's just, okay.
They just said something we chose, that we were gonna do it now, pay for it.
Yeah. Is there any issues or hesitations on just like, let's just roll right in, I mean, we've received all the payments for our IGAs? Is there something we don't wait till the end of the year for?
I would like to see the audit be done.
Yeah, okay, that's fair, yeah, it's more of an end of the year, then, okay, so we'll let twenty twenty five, I don't wanna address that right now. Uh, but back to payroll change forms, so Tim approved those, uh, yesterday, so there's probably gonna be, uh, you know, some work needed to put back pay and whatnot. That's all I have for budget.
I I have some for budget.
Cool. Nope.
Can we get the right stuff into, or I could ask and meet with finance, our, the budget is not correct.
Right.
And it, when I go in and I put in bills, you're over budget, you're over budget, I'm like, no, I'm not over budget. So when I put it into Tyler, can?
You wanna have a separate meeting with Paula and finance on that, we could all talk about it together.
You do mind setting that up?
Yeah, I can set that up for finance, because I think it's, we have to know where we're at.
Okay. Yeah, and let's just be there for that too, so you're not trying to get me with that and then tell us what happened, and then, I mean, we can all just meet together and all the rest of it.
Finance budget, good, thank you.
Yeah.
Perfect. Yeah, thanks for that reminder, but that was actually the red flag on the overtime, cuz I think it had zero dollar in that one.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so they really want us to be on the same page.
Okay.
So, okay, cool.
Anything else?
So, yeah, so add us to your staff meeting invite?
I'm gonna have my event, man.
Perfect, and I need something like for that meeting, I'll be.
Cool, all right, we'll move on then. Um, so next is, uh, item five here, minutes, reports and bills and approving the minutes from February seventh, twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? I hear no further discussion, all in favor of approving minutes from February seventh, twenty twenty five? Aye.
Aye.
Say aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, well, uh, during the meeting, next meeting is going to be April fourth, twenty twenty five, uh, ten AM, do you have a location?
Um, I'm assuming here, just unless the board schedules something.
Okay, cool. All right, well, thanks, everybody, and we'll close this out at, uh, eleven, thirty six.
Yeah.
Thirty six, sir.
And thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. He signs off a lot, yeah.
Oh, he signs off a lot, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the meetings. He's been off like eleven.
Um, we'll just take it as.